Okay. I'd like to open our Select Board meeting of September 27th.
Newman present.
Smith present.
Krantz and present. And we will forego the Pledge of Allegiance until we have more people in the room. But at the moment, I'd like to exit our meeting to enter into executive session.
Motion to enter into executive session.
Seconded.
Yeah, thank you. It's pursuant to GLC. She was going to write it down anyway.
Very lawyerly over here.
3821A3 to discuss writ and litigation with respect to street marking steer the comment. The meeting will return to public session at the end of the executive session. All those in favor?
Newman, I.
Smith.
Krantz and I.
Motion to adjourn to public session?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Newman, I.
Smith.
Krantz and I. Because we're waiting for all of you, we haven't done the pledge yet. So if everybody can. My allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing on the agenda is the meeting minutes of our executive session. Did you all get a chance to read those?
Yes.
Motion to approve executive session minutes from September 13th, 2023.
Could you speak up, please?
Sure.
A lot of people in here.
Yeah. There was a motion to approve our executive session meeting minutes of September 18th. And it was seconded. And all those in favor?
Newman, I.
Smith, I.
Krantz and I. And that's with the not to release them until a determination. We also have our September 18th regular meeting minutes. Do y'all have a chance to scope out those?
Have.
Yep. Motion to approve September 13th meeting minutes.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Newman, I.
Smith, I.
Krantz and I. We also had a short meeting on September 18th. Our meeting minutes for that. That was a six-minute meeting.
Motion to approve meeting minutes from September 18th.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Newman, I.
Smith.
Krantz and I. And now, we would like to move into our public hearings. Take a motion to open our public hearing.
So move to.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Newman, I.
Smith.
Krantz and I. So our first hearing is about a 61A release on 56 Kendall Hill Road. Is anybody here to speak to that? Somebody said yes? Oh, okay.
Yes.
Would you like to get up to the podium, introduce, tell us what's going on? I think I know. We have all the information, just the general public doesn't.
Okay, yeah. I don't have much information, but I can speak. Matt Elsberg, 47 Kendall Hill Road.
Sterling. So, yeah, we're here for the 51A, for the cell tower at 56 Kendall Hill Road. So if we could be updated on that and kind of briefed in the status and where that is, that would be great.
So each of the appropriate boards has signed off on this. Other than the assessors, they declined. But conservation, planning has signed off on it. And those are the, we still have a ways to go. I beg your pardon? They don't want it. They don't want the property. They don't want the property. Not the cell tower. They don't want the property.
So, I'm sorry.
So we go through each of the departments because we have first refusal on the piece of property. So we go through them all and lucky you, nobody wants it.
Okay. So the cell tower's not going. Sounds like it is.
Yes.
This is just to release the land and then there will be the building, be through the planning board, the plans for the cell tower.
Yeah. To build the cell tower, you need to, you need to get the land out of 61A first.
Okay.
Okay. So we're taking it out of 61A.
Okay.
The town always has the first rate of refusal.
Gotcha.
Yeah. That goes to different boards. So we don't want your property.
Yeah.
But yes, people would love to have a cell tower at some point.
Yeah. Whose property is it?
It's Sally Beckwith. I believe.
And the ZVA already has agreed to the special permit for that tower.
Right. So set it go.
May I approach the?
Yes, you may.
Thanks. Thank you.
Hey, town members. My name's Bobby Qualls. I'm a new resident to Sterling. I've been here just a little over two and a half years. And the cell tower idea, actually, when I noticed it, I kind of had a little bit of concern just regarding the prolonged health issues that the EMR and the RFR way is coming off that tower. Has that been evaluated and discussed and approved before the town moved forward?
I didn't catch your name. Bob?
Bobby.
Bobby?
Yes, ma'am.
Bobby Qualls.
I'm at 45 Kendall Hill.
That is, would have gone through the ZVA, not the Board of Selectmen. All we're here to do is to say, we do not want this piece of property.
Right.
So everything else has to go through the appropriate boards and committees, like the planning board. If you want the Board of Health to look at it, they can look at it also.
I'm just surprised that they haven't because it's, you know, recommended that towers go up within 500 meters of residents. We all live within 100 yards of that piece of property.
Yeah. So that could go for, well, did you want to buy the property? Because?
No.
Oh, damn it.
I should.
Yeah. But that's, that's the only purpose that we have is to make sure all the boards have released it and they didn't want it for anything that the town might want, like a park or a ball field.
All right. I have a better understanding.
Yeah. So, and the ZVA has issued a special permit for it, but it still has to go to the planning board too, Stephen, right?
I'll have to check with the building commissioner. If he says it needs to go through site plan review, it'll come to the planning board.
Thank you so much for the time.
No problem.
Is it, can I ask a question?
I'm listening.
Can you update, what boards it has gone through and what boards it would need to go through to become?
All the, all the boards that it would have to go through is the assessors, conservation, planning board, select board. Those are the boards that.
And the ZVA for their permits.
ZVA.
Okay. And it's gone through how many of those?
All of them.
Oh, okay.
And, and nobody was interested in the piece of property. So that releases it for 61A.
This is just to release the property. It's got nothing to do with the proof of the tower.
If it gets sent to the planning board for site plan review, I will be circulating the plan to all of the town's municipal departments for review and comment.
Thank you. Including the Board of Health?
Including the Board of Health.
Yeah. You're welcome to go to that meeting or any of those meetings and express any of the concerns that you have. But, but as far as anything in town, and we also checked with Bregration too, to see if there's anything, like when a piece of property comes through, we would check with them too. And it's like, do you see any use for this? You know, but to be honest with you, we don't have any money to buy the property, so, but.
Thanks for the better understanding. Sorry, I was a little murky with the reason of the meeting.
No worries. Okay. So I would entertain a motion to release the 61A on 56 Kendall Hill Road.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Newman, I.
Smith, I.
Krantz and I. All right. And our next piece of business is a continuation, actually, of a public hearing for earth removal permit for Onyx on 17 Stone Creek Way. Now that this is a continuation of the last meeting where Onyx's engineer was asked to go back and do some more specific indications on the, his mapping. And also, okay. Are you ready, Richard? Or Bill, did you want to say anything? Bill?
No.
Not you, Bill. Anything? Leaving it to Richard?
Try. Hi, good evening. Rich and Harry, this is Harry and Associates, engineer for project John Dirkin. Maybe here also Jim, representing Onyx Corporation. Since the last meeting, we revised the earth removal plans to have a stamp of Onyx Corporation on it and my stamp. And then there's a separate site plan and four sheets. I've been working to a planning board that has my Harrington Associates on the, on the site plan title block. So tonight, we're working with two plans. They both have Onyx on it. They're the earth removal plans. And you have, you have the Graves Engineering had a review letter for the earth removal dated August 30th. We've updated the plan dated today of September 27th. And what we basically did to give you an overview is all the parcel labels are now clear in box format. And the five that are in the earth removal application have the words earth removal parcel above the name and address. And then we're required to notify the abutters that any access parcels, as you know. So there's two on Choxet and two on Lemmonster. So those one, two, three, four parcels have the word access parcel above the map and parcel. So there's a little more clarity there. We've also added some declared contours. So what this represents is the closeout. Basically, all the trucks leave. You put the topsoil on there. You plant some grass. This is the picture, the best of our ability we can predict, you know, down a few years. So we have 50 feet off the perimeter of the property lines where we're cutting down. And then we've been working our way into the site at this location. So the large areas have kind of still, the rock face is up here now today and the equipment is down there. What I'll do is also, the engineers recommended that we don't show any made clear, like a disimproposed contours on this map. And then we also have the zone two line here and then the groundwater production district zone line here from your district maps on their plan properly labeled as well. Sheet number two is what we were talking about at the, at the hearing we brought in and we had some existing, we have a legend, basically, what it does over here. You have a design grade at the top. You have existing grade and then you do your math. Whether it's new math or old math, they come up with the same number. So every grade, the coloring where it's darker red is more of a cut. Where it's a lighter color, there's less. And then where it's like blue, there's a little bit of fill put back in because you put topsoil back after you remove the rock. So same thing here. The parcels are clearly labeled. The only difference on this plan is that we have the coloring and we have the cut and fills across the site so people can see that with the, with the legend right there. So in regards to your earth removal letter, we believe that everything is now on the plans of the Onyx dated revised September 27th, 23. There was some hatching over here that he asked about. If you recall, this parcel was divided with the cell tower. So that represented the area that was no longer in the mining operation and was sold to the abutters. So that's why Onyx had that hatched, was like a, like a don't go in there. So we took that off the plan also, just to clear that out. And so in regards to that, there was a question about following up on the previous decision. And we feel like we've met all those requirements and we have an attachment C on the plan. In regards to the other permitting process, as you know, we come back here frequently for your rules to renew earth removal applications. And also, if we expand like we did with the two of the back, we file a new application. We talked to the conservation and we're going to be filing a NOC with Ted. And we'll have the storm water, local storm water, by law review to also do the same thing. So if we file it next week, by Wednesday, we'll be on the October meeting, which is the last week in October. And then two days later or before, we'll be back with the planning board for the continued site plan review. So we have a staff meeting in between that. So what we anticipate as we go down three different lanes is whether you feel like it's okay to close this hearing, you have enough information and issue a decision. Fantastic. If not, we're still continuing forward with planning for the building, which is a 60 by 60 building on this parcel here. There's no gradient required or earth removal there. And it's more checking all the fire protection, water supply, stuff like things like that. Then the other one is the conservation commission, which as you know, in your conditions, if, there's a condition that the town planner said that if there's any work proposed in the phase that's in the buffer zone, then we have to file a conservation. So you need our rule support, recognizing that also. So we went in detail, I talked to your conservation administrator and that's our intentions is to file that and let that proceeding go on as well. And that's, that's the open.
Kirsten, you have any questions?
So I know you're going to go and get that NOI. She also mentioned that you need the storm water protection plan as well as the NPDES construction permit from the EPA. I feel like it's important to have those things before we can make a decision. It's kind of a complex area. There's a lot going on there with the wiki-peaky brook and storm water. And I really wouldn't be comfortable moving forward until we get these permits that are required by CONCOM. It's just my own personal feeling. I, there's a lot, I've been reading about the area and the wiki-peaky. And I just think that we need to protect the area, protect Sterling, but also, I mean, we want to help Onyx move forward in the best way that they can. But I think that as a company, they don't want to be vilified if we find anything and they've started work that could cause problems. So it might be in their best interest too, just to make sure that everything is above board as far as conservation goes and EPA. So that's my opinion.
David?
So I just have a couple of questions relative to the elevation changes on the final, should this project move forward, right? So accessing this pit from Choxet Road, where I guess the scale house is on that side of the property? So is that completely mined out at this point? Is there any?
Yes.
So that create, that's not going any lower? It's right where you are?
Right.
The, the grade coming in off of Lemmonster Road is going to be relatively the same matching?
So the grade, minus the train?
We'd have to go up a little bit, the grade in.
So there's no intention, I know that the project has to stay six feet away from the water table. There's no intention of going mining below?
No. All our designs are in with site plan review, keeping us six feet above ground.
So we couldn't go any lower where the site, where the site plan is and the area's cleared? Your rules don't allow so many, any deeper application? So we're basically working.
Thank you.
Okay. The only thing that we need to understand, you did get the order of conditions or a copy of that? There's several conditions that.
Oh, the draft conditions?
Yes.
Yes, from the town planner.
Yes. He put those together for us and there's 13 orders of conditions and all of the conditions that are already in there. And it covers what you're talking about, Kirsten, as far as this permit, earth removal permit would be contingent on CONCOM planning and more, more on CONCOM and the storm water as opposed to the earth removal itself. I mean, our concern as a, as a board is to let you continue to do business, but you have to follow all the conditions first.
Absolutely.
So for us to move this forward, we could approve it contingent on the idea that all of these things would be covered and you would have to have your permits from all the different boards.
Is this?
If we move it forward.
Right. So there's different phases. So to build phase three, which is the wash plant, we're not really going into the buffer zone. But there's different phases where if there's work out here, we'll, we'll go through the conservation file, but sometimes we don't have to be in the buffer zone. So the, when the condition says before we go in their jurisdiction, then we, we make sure we have the order and then we're going there, so.
So I have the information from Brianna that projects that disturb one acre of land or more are required to obtain the coverage under NPDES and the storm water. But it also says for phased projects, the determination of whether the storm water management standards apply is made on the entire project as a whole, including all phases. So it's not a phase by phase. It's the entire.
Right. That's, that's a fourth lane down the highway here with the EPA. That's, that's priority to get that filed regardless of if you give us everything tomorrow, like Christmas morning. We have to file that EPA and get going on that. All your rules, everyone's protection is the idea that nothing gets in the river. So the idea coming from all the regulations, first and foremost, is that nothing in the runoff gets into the river, which we've been protecting with all the sediment and the berms. And I've been walking the wetland line and I know where the places where it could go down. And since they've been, took over this property, there are other places that used to, I used to get closer to the brook, but they bermed up with the, with the tall windrows of topsoil and vegetation. So we'll, we'll do our job.
Yeah. The first thing we did when we did get on the property was ran a windrow, like Rich said, down from Choxet Road all the way down past the scale house to eliminate, because we knew that there was wetland down in that low spot, just to cover the sheet flow. Because when he showed up, it was just cut flat and we would just run right in there. So that was years and years and years ago.
Yes.
Mother operators. I, I feel we're proud of where we're at now and we're not going to violate that and certainly moving forward with NPDES permit and everything quickly here. He's planning to file it in the next couple of weeks, Terry.
Stephen?
Steve Wallace, town planner.
Please stand. Thanks.
For construction projects and earth removal projects, it is typical to impose a condition of approval that the applicant obtain a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit. I'm sorry. Yep. National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit, which requires the submission of a storm water pollution prevention plan and a construction general permit under the NPDES program. So those are typical conditions of approval that would be imposed on any earth removal project or construction project that disturbs over an acre.
Anything else, David?
No.
So again, I, I don't have a problem with the earth removal per se, as long as all of these other things are in place. And I, I would imagine that, well, Brianna for one, the conservation and the planning board, all of those submissions would be there in a timely fashion?
Yes.
TA on that?
Well, the next deadline's Wednesday for conservation. So that's to get that.
We come today?
Yes.
I think Rich, would 45 days be reasonable though? By the time you file NPDES, you get your CGP 20-day wait period.
The EPA one will come into play quicker than the.
I just think Maureen and the board probably asked him, right, is, is there a condition where we put a timeline on the implementation of those conditions? Do you think, I just realistically, even on the process one to me, I just.
Yes, that's administrative process with the, with the plans.
Would 45 days be enough, you think?
Typically is. I mean, it's, it's something.
Say 60? It'd be just with holidays and things?
Come on. It's, it's, if you want to see, put a day on it, that's fine. It's a, it's a requirement to file it now, so we're going to.
Do it now.
So Maureen, I guess, brush, we're moving forward with it, but there is a couple steps to it getting approved. So I'd say by the time we have one in place, if you gave us 60 days, it would be great. I think we'll have it done quicker.
There's just one sensitivity when you have, when you leapfrog in three different boards, it's.
Back to my question.
They're trying to get one plan done to, so everyone's administrative.
Trying to get close before we file.
Ideally, it would be nice if any town could get all the boards to sit together at the same time with the different applicants. That's my thing. Just so everybody is aware too, Onyx does have legal right to mine that property. I know that there's some concern about the blasting. It's going to happen, but John, you had assured people last week that you would do something as far as, for warning them?
Yeah. We've contacted a company that sent us a proposal. We haven't gotten it yet. It's sending us a proposal, which is, we'll ask for, you know, invite everybody to send in their number. I'll have to figure out with Bill and Stephen how I can get all the contacts, people that want to be contacted. But there's an automated call list that'll go out an hour before the blast and we can have it go up the day before as well. So there'd be a day before warning and a legal voicemail on their phones if they don't answer. And then the next, the day of, one hour before, they'll give them the window, which we'll coordinate with the fire department and that'll be automated.
Yeah. I think the abutters list you can get from the assessors office.
Yeah. But I know there was other residents here that were not abutters that asked to be added. So I think somehow we have to figure out how to reach those people.
Yeah.
But we did come up with a system that'll work that way.
All right. Anything else, Kirsten?
You guys have a website?
Yes.
Maybe that'd be an avenue. People could go on a website and I just had to be on the list just about.
Yeah, we have an info@onyx webpage as well that you can send an email to, adding yourself to, and those get checked regularly in the office and forwarded. So that'll be an easy way as well.
All right. So I would entertain a motion to move the earth removal.
Someone has their hand up, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Roseanne, map, 33 Taft Road. I would feel a whole technical lot better about this whole process. I know they own the land and I know they can do what they want with the land, but I'm interested as a taxpayer in this town for the betterment of this town, not for a corporation. And I have a few questions. I would feel better if they had everything in place, like CONCOM, they've met with CONCOM and everything else before you make any determination, because they may have something that bring up that, that you're not aware of. And so I would feel a lot better as a taxpayer, that everything was, every T was crossed and I was dotted before we could move ahead with anything like this. This is a huge project. Then there's going to be a wash thing. Is that on town water? How does that work? How does that work? And what are we going to wash the stone with?
Yeah, go ahead. This was all explained at the last meeting about the wash station.
At the last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be more discussed in the site plan review if you want to attend.
My site plan review would.
There'll be, there'll be four wells on site that will be dedicated to the supply of water to the wash, wash plant. There's an existing public water service on the property right now that'll be extended to the site, to the building, the maintenance garage for the bathroom. So that's, so onsite, there's four wells, two and two, before you get from Choxet Road to the scale house. And the water line, the torrent line that comes in right now to here, that's used in this area right now and will just be extended to the building.
Will that be a draw on Sterling's water system for the residents who are on?
No. No, the water's just like a regular customer.
My next question is, are you planning on these egresses on Lemmonster Road to be used on a constant basis or just for the use of, of emergency vehicles?
So, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Rich.
We, minus the kitchen sink, we asked to put everything on the plan. It might be wise, but, so we, we put the access data, we were applying for that this year, but they wanted to see it so they could make sure everything kind of worked or just notify everybody. So we're not looking to build that in the near future. If we do, you have to go to Mass DOT.
I understand that, but what would you, be your purpose of putting them there? I mean, other than for, for emergency vehicles? Are you planning to, to put them there and then be able to use trucks and vehicles of, you know, your own personal vehicles or something to access that property by, by Lemmonster Road? That's what I'm asking.
Right. So both, both roads are mass highway roads and so we have furlough on both of them. So they're both available to use.
Okay. So there will be increased traffic going in and out.
Oh, and they're available. Doesn't mean, but if, if, you would have a traffic study at that time if it's, before it's approved.[1785.48]
Okay, now my next question.
So the goal is to bring the site down from pads, it's kind of like over here, there's a building now, so it's kind of like you bring it down to a level area, then you can build it and get a permit for whatever the uses are in the industrial light district.
Now, do you have a finished product of what this will look like at the end of your destruction or construction?
Really? That isn't right, Roseanne.
Well, I, I, it's a fair question.
Not right, no. Yes, and that's the thing, that you're looking at a plan.
I am.
This is not.
I didn't know if they had one that was a buildable plan afterwards. That's all I'm asking, is there one or not?
It's years down the road and Steven can answer that for you.
So in 2007, when these folks or their, the former owner came in with Amarillo to change the zoning out there from rural residential to industrial, they did provide a schematic of what the industrial part could look like at full buildout about 20 years down the road. Now, depending on who they can get in there for industrial tenants, the location and size of the pads and the location of the lot lines will likely change depending on what their tenants, their future tenants need. So this is just an idea as to what it could look like prepared back in 2007.
I'd also suggest that, as Stephen has mentioned in the past, check out the industrial park that they did in Westminster.
Westminster Business Park at the corner of Route 2A and Depot Road, right before you get to the brewery.
Yeah, and that's something, it's not going to happen tomorrow, there's not going to be any pads in tomorrow or even next week, you know, but it is an avenue for economic development in Sterling, in the industrial lake area. So any more questions?
No, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Blaine Burchett, Raleigh Hill Road. I'm also a member of the DPW Board. I, there are a couple of things I think that people are not getting, not understanding, so at the risk of being pedantic here. This is an earth removal process, this has nothing to do with the buildings, right? As the buildings and that separate entrance has to be ruled by Mass DOT, and Mass DOT can make them jump through hoops and things that we haven't even thought of. Mass DOT invested millions of dollars on Route 12, and they're not going to be so quick to let anybody just poke a hole and let 30-ton trucks come in and out without all sorts of conditions. And this is going to take them a while. The point is, they're not doing this tomorrow, and there's all these other permit processes that they have to go through. This is just for for tomorrow. This is nothing else. We can talk about this other stuff, and I think it was driving the three of those, maybe all of us, crazy, but this is just about earth removal. And I think it's real clear to me that an approval on to remove the earth is not an approval to build a building, is not an approval to do an entrance onto 140, they're not related.
Be interesting to see him do an entrance onto 140.
Right. That would be really neat, sorry, 12. I was going to go on about something else.
All right, we're not going to do that.
I'm not, no, we joked our way out of that. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. That's the first thing. The second thing that's also important for me to say is that I sort of have gotten a sense of Onyx as a corporation, and I've watched them sort of grow into a varsity level operation. And I think they're really good, really good people for our town. And I am concerned that there's going to be a lot of bad press because I think they don't deserve it. I think they're trying to dot their i's and cross their t's in ways that, quite frankly, is very impressive and edifying, and it's very much varsity level work. So give them their due, listen carefully, don't jump to conclusions, and ask your questions. I think that's important. But this meeting is just about whether they can continue their operation right now, correct? Is that right?
Yes.
So I would, as a citizen, ask that you grant that permit conditional on all the conditions that were given. That's what I'm asking for as a citizen. And I have nothing to do with Onyx, except respect. And I have no ownership or anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Check that. Sure.
Uh, well, maybe I do, I don't know.
So I would entertain a motion that we approve the earth removal permit with the contingency of following in on all of the conditions, and we will, where'd he go?
Broke.
Oh. Richard has left the room.
He's shocked.
And to keep up on that, as far as making sure that, you know, we have everything in place before anything major happens, other than the typical.
Understood.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Grants and aye. Okay, you got a lot of ayes on you.
Hasn't changed in a while.
No, it hasn't changed at all, you're right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
I believe that was for, it wasn't Perkins.
This was somebody said, I think, on one of the websites, not the.
The community page, yeah, there was a little misconception.
It's like, I never heard of it.
Somebody stated that it was Perkins and it wasn't.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Can you even drag the kid out? Come on. Hi, Joe.
Hi, Maureen.
Hardly saw you over there.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, well, we're going to move on and we're going to skip from, our next action item was the warrant, but we're going to go right to, I just think Sheila Bean is here, so we're going to go right to you, Sheila, are you ready?
I am, thank you.
Okay, if you'd like to get up to the podium. And Sheila is looking to be appointed as the new Senior Center Director. As many know, Veronica Buckley will be leaving at the end of October. I'm giving her a ride. So Sheila, at first you want to just, obviously we have met, and you've met a couple of people in the room, but these two have not met you. So how about giving a little synopsis of who you are, where you've been, and what your goals are here in Sterling?
Well, it's nice to meet you all. I'm Sheila Bean. I have been an advocate for the aging of the disabled for many, many years, and I've spent the last seven years as the Assistant Director of the Long Term Care Embusman Program for Massachusetts. Service is my calling, that's what I've done for many, many years. And I am looking to have Veronica guide me so that I can see that this facility is obviously a well-oiled machine now. I want to make sure it stays that way. So that's what I'm looking at. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Excuse me, very impressive resume.
Thank you.
Wore a lot of hats over the last few years.
I have, I have, but that's okay.
That's good, it's a good experience.
Would you take over for me, Dave?
Well.
What a guy.
I'm sharing the duties.
And in addition to full-time work as an advocate, I also, I've actually given my notice, I've worked part-time at the Winchendon Fire Department for many years as well, as the Executive Assistant to the Chief.
You have any questions, Kristen?
How do you feel about taking on the Senior Tax Work Off Program up at the Senior Center?
Not familiar.
As soon as I learn more about it, but honestly, we have it in Winchendon as well. I think it's a wonderful program, as long as the seniors are able to do what's being expected of them, to work that tax off.
You got a long ways to go before you have to do that, Sheila.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, no, don't expect miracles. It'd be nice, but we don't expect them. And when it comes time to do that, Kama will be here to give you some guidance, but there's a lot of other things, obviously, you have to focus on for the center in general, and you have the opportunity to work with Veronica, which is a real plus.
I am grateful for that, yes.
And there's other people that you can reach out to, I think I told you that when we were interviewing, you know, Bill, of course, and Fred Apati in the office, and then Kama is a wealth of knowledge. So, anything else, David?
No, I don't have anything else, just welcome to town.
Thank you very much.
All set? Okay, Sheila, welcome.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Have a start, Dave.
I'm actually going to come in on Tuesday. My, as I said when we were interviewing, I work part-time at the fire department.
Yeah.
I gave my two weeks' notice, but I only work Mondays and Wednesdays, so Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday of this coming week, I'll be able to start coming in right away.
All right, sounds like a plan.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sheila Bean as the new Senior Center Director.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Grants and aye. Thanks again, Sheila, and welcome to Sterling.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
And then we're going to just go right down to the Cultural Council. Oh, I'm sorry, Veronica, did you have anything to say?
No, just welcome to Sheila, thank you.
What a surprise!
Surprise.
Surprise, surprise.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and then we have a couple of people that have stepped up and joined the Cultural Council, and I see, yeah, go ahead, Judy, introduce yourself.
So I'm Judy Dougherty for Sweat Hill Road and also the Chair of the Cultural Council, and delighted that we have two new folks because we have retired out some people like Roseanne, who's been very devoted to the Cultural Council prior. And so we put forward and voted at the committee level for Christine McCarthy, who has a history of working with the Historical Commission in town, the Garden Club, and had her own real estate business. So we're excited with the business know-how that she'll bring. And Molly Hartnett, one of our new youth, we established a new youth policy, the commitment for adults has been three years on the Cultural Council, and the committee voted a few months ago that because teens, well, to help civic engagement for young people, we wanted to make sure it was doable, and as teens' lives change and they go off to college, maybe they couldn't fulfill a three-year commitment, but if they could try for a one-year commitment and then go from there, including other youth. So Molly Hartnett is willing to participate, she's a young person I've known since, I think, first grade, since she was in first grade, not me. And she's a strong writer and has been involved in theater, so I'll let Molly introduce herself, but these are the two names.
Yep.
It's fancy. Molly Hartnett, Quail Roost Drive, because I feel like you have to say that. I'm excited to show the youth that there's more than just Yahoo in the community, that there are other opportunities. I am a strong writer, I am well on social media, trying to put out more of a presence for the Cultural Council and for events that we're hosting and scholarships that we can present, to be more present in the community.
Kristen?
Just one more thing before you vote your approval, just to say that the.
She says we're going to approve it.
The Cultural Council has a grant process and it's ongoing right now, so through Mass Cultural Council, the Mass Cultural Council website, individuals as well as groups in town can apply up until October 17th for some monies from the state.
Okay, back to Molly.
Where are you currently attending school? So I'm a senior at what you sit, but I'm taking dual enrollment classes at Quiddsig.
Great, all right. David?
Just thank you for volunteering, and I'd like to see you do your best to get more young adults interested in the workings of the town, because as you can see, we're getting older here, and we need to.
I feel that was directed at me.
That was. I thought it was directed at me.
Thank you.
I'm excited, Molly, I'm excited for you, I'm excited for the Cultural Council, I love that idea of having a youth representation on that. And as far as social media, couldn't ask for better, really.
We have two youth now.
Who's the other?
Julia Dougherty-Mean.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Okay, good, thank you, Molly, for stepping in, stepping up, and yes, there are other things besides Yahoo to get involved with in town, so I appreciate that. And with that, I would make a motion that we, or entertain a motion that we approve Christine McCarthy and Molly Hartnett to the Cultural Council.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and Molly's going to be for one year?
Yes.
And Christine is for three?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Grants and, yes.
Aye.
Also, a big shout-out to you, Roseanne, that was, you did a great job with that particular Cultural Council, surprise that you stepped away, but looking at your tan, I can imagine why. Maine has captured her heart. So, and then we have our town warrant, that in case everybody didn't hear previously, we have a special town meeting on October 16th, and we need to, this special town meeting was brought about by, really started with a citizens petition, which, we are going to move that down to the end, right, because we have to get through the finance things first before we get to the citizens petitions as far as the BOH regulations and. we've got a couple of other articles on there.
Just going to go through them if.
Okay, let's do that. I'm sure Joe's thrilled.
Joe has seen, yeah, we've got a couple of them. So assuming everything gets recommended and approved for tonight, and you guys can sign off on whatever, we can get things signed and sent off to the printer and posted tomorrow. It does have to be posted by Monday with Monday consuls. So there are two articles on there for the acquisition of 67 Bolden Road, which is a fire pond for the Pamela Lane subdivision. Second one is going to be 6 Michael Lane, which is all drainage. Our .9 acres and 1.05 acres, we keep and maintain them, but they aren't in our possession, so the developer is donating them to the town. At the annual town meeting, there was a town clerk's article for voter registration, which keeps it on the Friday or the day before a holiday. This is the corrected one, we had the incorrect one on there in May, so that would just make sure that voter registration, when it falls on a Saturday or holiday, it would be moved to the Friday or the workday before the holiday. So that would be acceptance of an MGL. The sixth, well, I don't know what the final numbers are going to be. The next one is going to be the opioid funds, we have to set up a special account for the opioid funds from those settlements and litigation that we joined. Currently, that number's about 8,700, which we'll have to get from free cash in the spring, but this is establishing the fund, and we are, I believe we get another payment before town meeting, so it'll automatically go in there, and those funds can only be spent for the purposes that are outlined by the state for abatement methods. The two that I brought to the Finance and Capital Committees last night were for Public Safety Communications, that would be asking the capital stabilization account for $30,000, I didn't get the number until yesterday. That to the cell tower, that was approved for Kendall Hill, this would be co-locating our equipment there, it's a higher location, would provide better coverage, so it would provide the cabinet, antennas, wiring, labor to get our stuff up there. It is going to be cheaper to do it at the same time they're constructing it, rather than to go back and do it a second time. And the second one would be for stabilization funds to pay for. And the second one would be for stabilization funds to pay for the two special elections we have to have with the vacancy at the state senate seat. 10/10 is the primary, and 11/7 is the date of the election, and obviously to pay for our special town meeting, which is on 10/16. And then we did receive a request from the regional school district for a, an amendment to the regional agreement, which would update the numbers of towns based on the most recent census data.
They sending money back?
No.
Oh. Thought I'd ask.
And then there's two citizens petitions. So typically, there is not any action on making recommendations on those, but they didn't have it on their agenda, but the consensus from the capital and finance was to approve the stabilization and capital stabilization requests.
The joint committee will approve, and we discussed that last night with Bill.
Okay.
We are gonna establish a meeting so that we have an agenda, I don't officially approve this.
Okay. Do we have a dollar figure on that?
Which one?
What a special town meeting is gonna cost?
So it was.
Put them all together?
Yeah.
So $25,000 for the special elections and.
Yeah, so it's about $8,000 for the special elections and $7,000 for the town meeting.
Really? Okay. And then, and then the other two, do we have a number on, I see there's a citizens petition for a board of health audit? Do you have a number on that?
They've requested $10,000.
$10,000? Isn't this something you can get through public records?
It's what the petition asks for.
Okay. All right. Any questions, Kristin?
Nope.
Any answers?
So if you would like to vote to recommend them, you're more than able to, if you don't want to, I can take those off, and we can just try and as is.
Take what off?
The note that says recommendations.
Oh. David?
I don't have any comment.
You get any questions?
I don't have any questions.
All right, so, hey, it is what it is, it's gonna be a special town meeting at 6:30 on Chalk, at the Chalks at Middle School gym, as usual. I hope people show up. So I would entertain a motion that we move the warrant forward.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Grant's aye. So this'll go to the printers, and they'll be available, and then.
Soon they get them back, yep.
And then we'll get it on the website?
It'll be probably up tomorrow, barring any complications.
Tomorrow?
I just gotta, it's gone to town council already, I just have to send it back because I didn't send it to them with the additional citizens petition, but there's nothing that can be changed on that, so.
You okay with this, Joe?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, then. All right, and then we have your report, Bill?
Sure, a few things. Monty Tech is working on the wall at Pig's Pond, on the memorial wall, the bricks that were in the, in the walkway on the playground side, so that's coming along, they do have the basin there, they're also going to put in the footings for the benches at the pullouts along the path, so those will be going in over the next couple of weeks. As Mr. Mackey mentioned, if anybody's interested in being the market advisory representative, still available. We did, and there's two attachments in there somewhere, two community compact best practices grants that we received, I mentioned it to Joe in the finance committee and capital committees last night, we'll be working with UMass Boston, the Collins Center for a capital improvement plan. I think ours is pretty good, but it is going to definitely improve it, and a budget document, the first one is going to be the capital improvement plan, I do have something to give you now, now that we had our kickoff meeting Fred and I yesterday, so developing the capital investment strategy, where we want to pay things from and what the, the history has been, and where we want to go with things, whether things are gonna come from the capital stabilization, free cash, debt-funded, whatever it's going to be, enterprise-funded, obviously for water. Definitely improve our capital plan and what we're looking for, like I said, we have a pretty decent one, but this will definitely pull everything together that we do have. So the capital plan that we are working on, there is a timeline number five, so we've had the kickoff meeting, they've requested a bunch of information as of today, and that should be ready for the town meeting, so their schedule is the same as our schedule.
We're talking about the May town meeting?
Yes, the annual town meeting.
And you can breathe.
So that's the first one. The second one will be going in for the following year, I was incorrect on that, we'll be getting a lot of the information they need through this year's budget process, which will just make it easier for the following years for FY '26. That's going to definitely be a bigger lift, but definitely going to help our budget process in the long run, so it'll get us some new templates for the department's operating budgets. The bigger thing would be what are our goals and plans for the future, and tying those into it. Obviously, getting that information out, there is a timeline that'll get us to FY 2026 annual town meeting in 2025, so you can read through those scopes of work if you'd like, if there's any questions, but they are definitely going to be helpful, we did a capital improvement plan with them in Beckett, similar to this, so I am familiar on that part, and they were finishing up the budget document, so we are, we were pleased with it there, and it's definitely a good program, and definitely a good document, so. The second, I, those are two, I guess, the next one would be the 2023 and '04 annual town meeting, finance committee budget schedule, finance and CBC has voted on it.
Yeah.
They've seen it, so we can put it on the next agenda to be approved, there was just one typo, so I'll have to, or one adjustment from their meeting, get that on the next agenda to be approved, but we definitely streamlined it a little better, didn't have so many hard and fast dates in there to get things done, which will give us a little, little bit of leeway, particularly with some of the capital things that we have going on with the grant funds, so. Those are the big ones. We do have the special town meeting, as I noted, we have the calendar, and the MMA, obviously Sterling is a member, will be hosting the legislative breakfast coming up next week, so that's been sent out to MMA members, so I would expect people from the area to be attending, and if you're able to make it.
Next week?
Friday.
Think those are the biggest items at this point?
Kristen? Get a breath? Anything for you, David?
Nothing. Thank you, Bill.
All set? Okay, Kama? Nothing? All right, well, then I would entertain a motion, motion to adjourn.
Do you have a public session?
We weren't planning on public session. Huh?
I saw you had a public session. I'm your janitor.
Yeah, we weren't planning on it. It does say that, but it's really our discretion, so do anybody else need a public session? What do you need?
I'd like to say something.
Very short, Laura, okay?
Laura, Richie, 53rd Road, I just want to say thank you for my signs, okay? I did talk to Bill Caldwell the other day, okay, because I didn't see the signs, but I just want to say I'm three for three with the DPW, okay? So cha-ching, for me, okay, because the DOT agreed with me about the signs across the street from the school, so no traffic across the street from the school. Hallelujah. All right, and I also talked to the bus company, and the bus company was elated, okay? The bus company wanted to know if I did that for them, and I said I did it for you, and I did it for me, and I did it for everybody else in the town, because the bus company had no say in whether or not they could put signs across the street from the school to be allowed to put their buses through there safely because of the contract. So they were elated, everybody's happy so far, I haven't seen any problems down there. I don't know, whatever you guys did amongst yourselves, if you communicated and did it all, or if it was up to the DOT, nobody ever got back to me with the whole decision about what the DOT said, so as long as I have my signs and the DOT, I asked for no stopping, they put all three, okay, on the thing, no parking, no stopping, no standing, so there you go. Cha-ching.
Okay, now.
Listen.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, thank you.